All right, thank you guys for waiting. The September 24th, 2025 regular meeting of the Board of Slackton will come to order. Oh, Debbie is joining via phone, so Deb Downey, we have a board member joining via phone. Ben and I are here, and we'll start with the plan. Thank you.
...................................................
All right, thank you. So just to note, on our agenda, we did have another K-12 Building Committee interview for Farah Garland. Unfortunately, Farah is not feeling well, so at our next meeting, we'll do the interview for Farah. So that brings us to interviews for planning and zoning, and I just wanted to say thank you. Last time, we had like no one apply for planning and zoning, and now we've actually had a number of applicants, and we just really, really appreciate it. Just to note, there are actually, there's two seats, so Lynn Conway and Bennett Brissette turns up planning and zoning, their seats are open. So just to note, so you guys know the applicants, we have Carl Barney Jr., David Rendesendez, Lindsay Pike Fairchild, Hannah, I don't know what's up her last name, apologize, Hannah, Hannah G., and then Morgan Yandow. We ask everybody the same questions, you got four questions. We usually just do them in order that they were received, the applications. So CJ, you are up first, if you don't mind, and we have people usually sit right here, slightly awkward, we know, we appreciate this. And Debbie, I won't make you ask any questions since you're not here, but can you hear okay?
Yep, I can hear okay. Can you hear me?
Yep, you're crystal clear.
Okay, I'm gonna go unmute and just listen.
All right, thanks. Ben, do you want to start?
Sure. Good evening, thanks for calling for it. What is your opinion of the responsibilities and primary function of the Planning and Zoning Commission?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Your opinion of the responsibilities and primary function of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Good question. My understanding is you're vetting projects that are brought to the Planning and Zoning Board to ensure that they fit within the comprehensive plan, I believe, and fit within our zoning regulations.
All right, I'll go number two, Ben. Do you want to just, we have your application.
We're having a very...
If you want to, we have your application, but if you just wanted to expand on anything that you feel like as a volunteer or professionally that you think would, is relevant to planning and zoning, and then also any unique skills, perspectives, or expertise you feel like you'd bring to a commission?
I've spent the last, you know, nine years, 10 years developing commercial real estate. I have a self-storage portfolio that I developed, five locations, 240-plus thousand square feet, gross square foot, 2,000-plus units. I've been through planning boards in three different states, this planning board in Connecticut, Charlestown, Rhode Island, so other planning boards in Massachusetts. I've had, you know, great experience doing it. We never pushed the envelope, we stood within the guidelines and got projects, good projects put through. I've had, you know, projects that have taken two and a half years to get to the finish line, and just require patience, and again, you know, working with planners and the board members to get a project the way they see fit for the towns.
Did you say you've been before this?
Yeah, I built a self-storage facility over on St. Andrew Drive.
If you're appointed to the Planning and Zoning Commission, what would you consider a successful outcome to your tenure with the commission?
Adding value wherever I can, any project, somebody's number on the table, whether it's residential, commercial, that's kind of all right. I think I've had some good experience over the years with both residential and commercial.
Thank you. All right, last one. Slightly painful, we know. So this is just, as you may, I'm not sure everybody knows this, kind of just for the record, the state of Connecticut now requires members of Planning and Zoning Commissions to complete four hours of training within one year of being seated, and then once again per term. So we just wanted to be sure all applicants are prepared to fulfill this requirement should they be seated.
Sure.
Do you have any questions for us?
What's the time limit? Would, now, are they...
Ben, we probably could ask persons between...
Two meetings a month, plus now, I guess still need it for the zoning rewrites or some additional...
That's kind of flexible.
And then there'll be the POCD, is that a subcommittee of planning and zoning?
It's a subcommittee now.
All right, so you wouldn't necessarily, new members wouldn't have to be on it, but they are updating the plan of conservation and development?
Yeah, I imagine that will be handled under regular meetings.
Yeah. So hopefully just the two meetings, and Ben can talk more, because he was on there, but some of them can go quite long.
Yeah.
But...
I was gonna say, not so much lately, but last week was pretty late, so you never know. One more question. What do you see as the most important issues facing Stonington over the next six years, and how could the Planning and Zoning Commission address it?
My understanding is like an infrastructure issue with sewer capacity and, you know, the school system. An issue with the school, I think, I think school's adequate, but I think it's gonna, size-wise, I don't think it's appropriate. Because why, I understand the kids go to the school there, but it's smaller than where they were before. So I think building and figuring out a way to build out that infrastructure to accommodate some people who want, for other developments in towns, I think is very important.
Thank you. Can I get your questions first?
Sure.
All right, thank you. And we don't hold it against anybody if you leave after your interview, because yeah, there's just a lot to go through, so don't feel pressured to stay. Thank you. All right, next up is David. Thank you so much, David. I do just want to know, David is currently an alternate member, and thank you for spending your time at another town meeting.
Thanks, yes, I went through this last September.
Yeah, I know, thank you.
You should go to the question. Yeah.
I'll have the answers to my last.
Do you want to start?
Sure.
What is your opinion of the responsibilities and primary function of the Planning and Zoning Commission?
I think to, more to help landowners, you know, maintain their property rights, but try to guide them to do the right thing for the town, and I think we've had good luck in the past few meetings, you know, getting, you know, hopefully getting people to put streets in the correct place, and I don't know if you were at those meetings, but there, you know, there are tweets that people can make to projects that really help the town, and, you know, we spend a lot of time trying to make the properties look good, have proper screening, and have proper buffer between commercial and residential properties. I think the community does a pretty good job.
Thank you. All right, so same thing. We know a lot of it, but if you wanted to add on anything about any other volunteer roles or professional experience, and then specifically any unique skills, perspective, or expertise you'd like to bring?
Sure, I'll go through this quick. I've been in, my first zoning meeting was in Stonington in 1986 to build Beddleton nursing home, I was part of the team, was very young, but, and then after that, I was, spent a lot of time building nursing homes throughout the country, gone to a lot of zoning meetings. And my last six years of my career was trying to build eating disorder treatment centers, which were tough to get through zoning boards, but I spent many, many hours in zoning boards in six or seven states, and were successful on most of our projects, but so, yeah, and then I spent 13 years on ZBA in town, and then the past year on the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Thank you. All right.
If you're appointed to the Planning and Zoning Commission, what would you consider a successful outcome to your tenure with the commission?
I think there's a lot going on now. Clifton is the busiest guy in this part of the state, all right, so we're working on the POCD rewrite, the zoning rewrite. We have a lot of big projects on, you know, coming up, especially in the Poughkeepsie area. So just to be able to, you know, make sure that when those projects go through, again, we're doing the best thing for the town, and trying to guide the developers to, you know, do the best thing for Stonington.
Thank you. Same question, you already know about the requirement, I assume from the state, far and able to meet that?
Yeah, yes, I, I'm retired. These meetings, the last Tuesday's meeting, I don't want to scare anybody away, but our package that we got was 383 pages to review before the meeting. There are a lot of stuff, you know, so it takes a little while to go through, and, but it's, you know, I think it's important to know what we're talking about when folks come in, so I try to go through every page, skip through the leases, I mean, the deeds. But yes, I, some travel next year, but I can make most of the meetings, yeah.
Great. And you're good with the new requirement from the state of Connecticut on training?
Yeah, I was the guy, I haven't had any training yet in my, out of compliance, or is that a new?
It's a new one.
New one, okay.
So yeah, you have a year.
Yeah.
Thank you. Ben, do you want to ask your follow-up?
Yeah, sure. What do you see as the most important issue facing Stonington over the next six years, and how could the Planning and Zoning Commission address it?
I think there's a lot of need for housing, and we obviously have some need for affordable housing. I mean, that's tricky with, you know, some of the applicants coming in now. You know, we have to find a way to get to have nice projects, right? So you know the law, we can't, we can't follow our zoning regulations if they have, if they have affordable housing, and I think we can have, we can, we can have some bad outcomes if we can't figure out how to, how to deal with that. So hopefully, let me find a way to increase our affordable housing in town. I know it's tough, but it would be, it would be helpful to make sure projects are built correctly.
Thank you. Do you have any questions, Rob?
I do not.
Thank you, and again, we will not hold it against you if you want to leave right now, but thank you. Lindsay, you're up next. All right. Same questions.
Okay.
But we'll...
You have to remind me of the...
Yeah, so that's, yeah, that's your first task, do you remember all the questions? So Ben, you want to start?
Sure. What is your opinion of the responsibilities and primary function of the Planning and Zoning Commission?
Primarily, I think it is to apply the regulations and the zoning code in a really fair and consistent way, and then also to bring in all of the voices and perspectives in town, make sure everybody has a seat at the table and has their chance, and is heard, so that we can build consensus and really, you know, guide our growth in a fair and balanced and sustainable way in our town. I think that obviously we have to follow the laws, we have to follow the zoning regulations, we have to be guided by the POCD, but doing that in a really clear and transparent way is something the Planning and Zoning Commission can do to build trust in the community and the process, and then also when you become predictable, it allows, you know, as we've heard previously, the ability to work with property owners for better outcomes.
Thank you. So Mike, do you want to share anything about volunteer roles or professional background, or any specific skills, perspectives, or expertise?
Sure. So I don't remember everything I put in the application, so I'll run through it quick. I've been on the Stonington Climate Change Task Force, thank you. I've started the Climate Change Task Force for the last 10 years. Was really excited when we got the grant to create Stonington's first coastal resiliency plan, that's something that's really important to me. And for serving my second term on the Waterfront Commission, I was on the Plan of Conservation and Development Implementation Committee, which I think gave me a really good perspective on, you know, long-term planning and what works, and maybe what we could do better. I served on Connecticut's Greater Mystic Tourism Board, on the Sustainability and Infrastructure Subcommittee's. I helped out with the Connecticut Commission on Environmental Standards as an employee, an employee sort of alternate for my employer, where we're able to help shape environmental regulation in Connecticut. And I've had a lot of jobs in a lot of different organizations, nonprofits and otherwise, great here in our community, and I think I have a great perspective of a number of the different ways that our community works, and the different types of businesses, and people who live in our community, and how all of those can come together, both with industry, commercial, you know, community, and science and policy.
Thank you.
If you're appointed to the Planning and Zoning Commission, what would you consider a successful outcome to your tenure with the commission?
I think a successful outcome would be, you know, as I started to say before, being really transparent and consistent in the decisions. I think that, you know, there is a lot to read and research ahead of time, I've held off applying for this for a while because I wanted to make sure that I had enough time to be able to do the proper research and reading ahead of time. So to me, it would be that every decision was made carefully, with forethought and with consistency with decisions in the past, and that I and the commission are seen as trustworthy and consistent.
Thank you. The impression about fulfilling up the new Connecticut requirement for training?
Yes, that sounds like a great idea, and I would hope I would do it earlier this year.
Okay, so that's good. And Ben, do you want to ask your follow-up?
Yeah, what do you see is the most important issue facing Stonington over the next six years, and how could the Planning and Zoning Commission address it?
Well, sometimes I think it depends on what comes before the Planning and Zoning Commission, right? But one issue that I see immediately is the capacity in our sewer systems and what our treatment plants, and how that is actually guiding our development in some ways, rather than what we perhaps would prefer to guide our development, which is things like the POCD and our shared values and missions. And so, you know, looking for creative ways to deal with that situation, working with the town and dealing with that situation. And there's a lot of those, you know, short-term needs that we have, including housing, but I don't want to lose perspective of issues for like coastal resiliency and those long-term things that we need to worry about as well.
Thank you. Do you have questions for us?
No, well, I may get back to you.
Yeah.
I don't have to take up the time now, yes, perfect, thank you.
Thank you. Hannah? Is Hannah here? Hi. How do you say your last name? I'm so sorry about that.
Dino.
Dino, all right, thank you. Very welcome.
Hi, Hannah, thank you. So same thing, I'm Danielle.
That's nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you. What is your opinion of the responsibilities and primary function of the Planning and Zoning Commission?
So your responsibilities and primary function, from my understanding, is that you guys are in line with the POCD, Plan of Conservation and Development, to create an environment that's more accessible, climate resilient, more environmentally friendly, energy-efficient development, and also enforcing the zoning regulations that we currently have. So when it comes to a project that comes in, does it align with our regulations, and we really have to take into consideration all other factors, including, like I said, the POCD. Sorry if that was a little technical, but...
Okay. So a physical, yeah, perfectly relaxed session. So if you want to talk about volunteer or professional background that you think makes it relevant for this committee, and also if you want to touch on any unique skills, perspectives, or expertise?
I am currently the zoning official for the Town of Ledgerd, and I'm also their wetlands enforcement agent. So I've been doing it for just over a year now, so I've done a lot of training, I've seen, I've gone to every single Planning and Zoning Commission meeting in our town, I don't miss a meeting. So I sat through hours and hours and hours of meetings for these big, big projects, so it really got me into the, into the deep water to really learn what it's like for the commission to receive an application, go through the regulations, have these reports that they need to read through, and then also hearing the public, their concerns, their comments, and really taking that all in to make their decision. So it's, it is a big responsibility.
Thank you. Oh, no, you're next, thank you.
Sure. If you're appointed to the Planning and Zoning Commission, what would you consider a successful outcome to your tenure?
I think a successful outcome would be helping with our affordable housing, that's a really big thing in Connecticut right now, but also bringing forth projects that would really benefit the community, like, like as an example, maybe a walking path, you know, more accessibility for people to kind of get out there around town in a safe manner too, more parks, you know, other ideas that developers can come with that are energy-efficient, climate-resilient, because, you know, right now, I think Stonington's kind of dealing with, I may even go into the next question a little bit too fast, but a couple of issues when it comes to rising sea levels, so.
So before Ben goes his one, just, yeah, I'm sure you're aware of the new requirement, and are you prepared to fill that?
Yes, I'm required to do that also in my regular job, so I go to the one, I can't remember what it's called, but it's basically the 12-credit one, where you sit all day and the lawyers talk to you, and you get that good old training, and so, yes, I have no issue doing that.
What do you see as the most important issue facing Stonington over the next six years, and how could the Planning and Zoning Commission address it?
I, I think right now, for, for what I see, is it's definitely increase in sea levels, climate resiliency projects, and also creating more development that is sustainable and that we can work with to improve residential neighborhoods, communities, yeah.
Thank you. Hannah, do you have any questions for us?
You guys meet the third Tuesday and Wednesday of everyone? Just wanted to verify.
Six and four. Well, the Planning and Zoning needs...
First and third.
The first and third.
First and third.
Yeah, I was gonna check.
Yes, Tuesday.
First and third, Tuesday.
Tuesday, yeah. And then three on our board is obviously on the Wednesdays. And then, yeah, and if you have other follow-up questions that you think are definitely good ways, send them there. But thank you.
All right, thank you so much, this was nice meeting you guys.
Thank you. Saw a picture of Brad on his trip. You're telling.
I don't know where he is, but I'm sure he's having a great time.
Thank you so much. Okay, so that's it for this one. So thank you, so now we're gonna move to like the regular part of the meeting, so comments from the public. Anyone have any comment? Okay, one, twice, all right. The people of the minutes. Do I get a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of September 10?
So moved.
A second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I just had one item, Stacy, where, I can't read on my phone, but with the discussion with Jill Senior, I just thought there should be some brief mention of discussion regarding pickup trash collection in, on private roads, and perhaps developing a consistent policy on that.
Anything else?
Just some mention that was discussed.
Anything else? Debbie, anything on your end?
No, no, that sounds good, though I agree with what Ben said, that that is something we should add, because we did talk about it, but otherwise, I have no other issues.
All right, thank you. And just as a reminder, you know, whenever you guys see these, if you see anything ahead of time, you can share it with Stacy, and she can make it ahead of the meeting too, you don't have to wait till now. But pending that, if everyone is good with that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. All right. Under correspondence, I just want to note that, as previously mentioned, Farah Garland's submitted an application for the K-12 Building Committee. Again, we don't usually get a lot of applications for all our boards and commissions, just for the students in the room, so it's been really exciting, both for planning and zoning, and also for the Board of Police Commissioners, we've gotten a number of applications. So we've got Amy Nicholas, Harry Borden, Bradley Sherman, and Stephen Small, who've all submitted applications for the Board of Police Commissioners, and that will be opening, their FETC opens at the end of October, or start of November. We also had Raymond DeSault request reappointment to the Zoning Board of Appeals, moving from a regular member to an alternate. James Stanton requested reappointment as a regular member, and then Hannah had submitted an application for planning and zoning. Okay, so now, under appointments, for a reappointment to the WPCA, do I hear a motion to reappoint Robert Ulrich to the WPCA, moving from an alternate to a regular member?
So moved.
A second.
Any discussion?
No, it's still a great job.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you, Robert. Now, under Zoning Board of Appeals, do I hear a motion, we're gonna do all these separately, do I hear a motion to reappoint James Stanton to the Zoning Board of Appeals?
Yes, so moved.
A second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Nope.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Now, do I hear a motion to reappoint Stephen Adams, who, Debbie, just so you know, Stephen is in the room, to the Zoning Board of Appeals, moving from an alternate to a regular member?
So moved.
A second.
Any discussion?
Nope.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Do I hear a motion out of reappoint Raymond DeSault to the Zoning Board of Appeals, moving from a regular to an alternate?
So moved.
Here, a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. All right, thank you to everybody for doing that.
Thanks, Steve.
Then resignation, Elizabeth Brummond has resigned from the Architectural Design Review Board, we thank her for her service to this board. Nothing under all business.
How many vacancies do we have now in the area?
I don't know, I'll have to tell them. Under new business, so we had the, we had the award of bid for the water project on Greenhaven and Renee, which is just unbelievably exciting. I'm actually gonna ask that we table this award, because the lowest bidder, we are giving them a week basically to see if they can get registered with SAM, which is the requirement, because it's a federal grant, and they weren't registered yet, but they're working to try and get registered in time. So if in one week they're not registered, then we would go to the second lowest bidder, that they would then need to go to the Board of Finance meeting, which is next Wednesday, which is also partially why we gave this one-week deadline. And then at our next meeting, a week after that, we would then either award the bid to the original person we intended to award it to, or the second one.
And then the second one is registered?
Yes, and the second one is registered, and they're working on doing the reference checks just in case right now, so that way, everything should be ready by next Wednesday.
Okay.
Any questions on that?
No, I'm gonna table, we're looking.
Debbie, you want a second?
A second, yeah, second.
Just under further discussion, I will say, though, this is amazing, because I was completely, being very honest, panicked that we were gonna have the same problem we did with the town doc. And all the bids, I think you guys could see in your packet, came in pretty close to each other, and all under the amount that we have left in the grant, we have about 1.6 million left in the grant, and even with the contingency. So this is amazing news, and just so you guys know, this is a project that's been around probably since 2016, I think I was on the Board of Finance when it was first presented, and we couldn't fund it locally, long, very long story, but short, thanks to the work of our town engineer, my office, actually, our chair of our Planning and Zoning Commission as a volunteer, in his professional capacity, helped put together a great application for federal funds, so we could connect essentially like the water line in one section of Poughkeepsie just dead ends, and the fire department has wanted it to be a loop for some time, just for safety reasons, and we got a $1.9 million grant to do it. So it's really exciting, and if all this goes forward, they should actually start the work this, later this fall, let it sit, and then finish it up in the spring, worst case, they have to wait till the spring and then finish it over that timeframe. So that is just amazing, so huge thank you. Chris Gremau will come in for our next meeting, when we do end up voting on who we're going with. I told him he didn't need to come today, but so, if that's all fine, then all those in favor?
Aye.
For tagging, aye, motion carries. All right, so the next item is a discussion on the cap of real property tax exemption for veterans, the service-connected permanent and total disability rating, and then just to note, after that, later in the meeting, just because it might get confusing, we're gonna set the call related to this topic for a town meeting on October 6, to go on to other related items with the veterans. I just want to give the floor for a second, because you were so kind to join us there. Is there anything you want to say? I don't want to put you on the spot, though.
I did put out an email with Danielle's message, and I did have no response from the American Legion. I'm still working through issues for the BFW, and I'm gonna put out that email tomorrow and see how many 100% disabled veterans we have in Stonington. I've asked that question to some of the other officers, and they don't know either. I do know a couple of them. But understanding the financial aspect, you have to have a fair balance between what the town needs and what the veterans need also, and this appears to be... the town needs and what the veterans need also, and this appears to be in line with a fair balance. But I'd still like to reserve the right, if I do have a response from any of our VFW members, to bring it, bring it before the 6th of October meeting.
If we get so clouded, then we can talk about, right now, actually. Eric, thank you so much, and I just had, so Eric's the commander of the Mystic VFW, and thank you for your service very much. And we also reached out to Ken Hartline for the Pocatuck VFW. He said he shared with his members, as of today, we don't believe he heard anything back. So I'm gonna give an overview of just kind of things we talked about at a previous meeting. And then Debbie, we can, and Ben, discuss if we want to move forward with this ordinance right now, or if we want to vote to table it to give in our next meeting, to give Eric a little bit more time, or I'll run through this. Also, we did check with the town attorney for an ordinance that we passed, people would only need to get their 20 votes to overturn it and send it to a town meeting. So we said that does also seem very reasonable, like I could go out and get the 20 signatures if, if needed. So we can discuss the different options we have, but I'll just give an overview for students and everybody here, and just to remind our board. So as a reminder, in 2024, Public Act 2446 was passed, which establishes a property tax exemption for Connecticut veterans who have a service-connected permanent and total disability rating. The purpose of this law was to provide meaningful support to veterans who have suffered full service-connected disabilities. However, the original legislation lacked clarity around how these ratings work, particularly for veterans with a total disability, disability individual unemployability, the TDIU status, but who may not be rated 100% based on the VA's criteria. So that's one issue we're looking to address. Then the next one. Additionally, homeowner exemptions typically have a finite exemption amount or tied to either an income threshold or some type of means testing, but because the original language was not written properly to encompass the intent of the originally discussed legislation, just to show kind of, just how kind of vastly this was different from what was originally shared to what came into implementation, was the cost estimate for statewide impact was supposed to be 4.9 million, that was the fiscal note. In Stonington alone, this has grown to over $13 million. And one thing our tax assessor wanted to point out, too, we've been getting calls from people out of state wanting to know what different towns are doing in regards to this legislation and potentially deciding where to live based on this exemption. So one other thing to add was that the General Assembly in 2025 passed House Bill 7287 as a means to allow municipalities to address some of the issues from their previous legislation, and we've been discussing as a board and to think about how best to implement these. So basically, we have draft ordinances that have been prepared to reflect the following, and as I think Eric mentions, when I say we're trying to be fair, consistent, and fiscally responsible. So one thing, which we were gonna talk about specifically after I finish my diatribe right now, is capping the exemption amount at the median assessed value of residential real property in the municipality. So this helps maintain equity across the community. Then the other two items that will be, if, once we vote on it, sent into a town meeting, is to explicitly include the TDIU as an eligible category, recognizing that veterans with this status are unable to work and should receive the exemption. The second option would be to include Gold Star families in the exemption to extend respect and support to families who have made such a profound sacrifice. The town attorney did confirm that the Board of Sclam has the authority to vote on the capping under that House bill, and the two other ordinances should go to a town meeting. As Eric kindly mentioned, we did outreach to our two local VFW chapters, we've also spoken with some individuals, and through Eric's generosity, he also reached out to the American Legion. The only other thing to note that I don't think I shared with you last meeting is that the assessor's office has notified every veteran who had come in to receive this exemption that, that the program was under review by the state and then would be under review locally. So each recipient of the current exemption as it stands has signed an affidavit acknowledging that the exemption is subject to change, and our office did that again out of, you know, wanting to be sure we're being as transparent as possible, that notifying everyone that things could change. And then finally, as a reminder, per Section 34 of the Town Charter, any ordinance is subject to repeal by the electors through petition, and as I mentioned, in this case it would take 20 votes, so.
20 signatures.
20 signatures, yeah, thank you. So I'll stop talking now, so for Debbie and Ben, you know, we can either move forward with the capping of the median price now, we could table it and discuss it and then table it and vote on it at the next meeting to give the veterans a bit more time. We have a Stephen member of the press here today, so getting some information out in the paper might also help us connect with some veterans we haven't been able to. I'll open the floor, though, for your guys' discussion and thought.
Deb, I have a question for you.
I, I would be fine with moving ahead this meeting with the cap, based on discussions with the assessor who wanted to get something by October 1st, you know, to get the grant list set. You know, this has been around for a couple of meetings, we have talked about it, and given the fact that it could be easily reversed if people feel very strongly about it, so I'm inclined to move ahead with the cap now. You know, the cost is significant to the town and it's many other veterans among other citizens who will be paying for that. And I'm actually the daughter and mother of veterans, so, and an active service member, so I absolutely, you know, think they do deserve our support, but I think the cap is very important at this point because of the way the law was written, which was not the way it was intended.
So I'm gonna agree with basically all of that, so I'm, I'm all for moving ahead with the cap at the next meeting.
If you guys don't mind, I'd love to just ask Erica a question, since he's here. So basically, what we're discussing is, you know, we could vote on this as we originally intended tonight on putting the cap for the median assessed value, and then the other things are still going to the town meeting on October 6th, with the idea of people are, you know, disagree with our choice, they can, you know, they can, I'm happy to help them, too, but get 20 signatures and, you know, reverse the decision, or we could, I mean, depending how Ben and Debbie vote, we could try and give you another two weeks, but I think as Debbie brought up, which I forgot, our assessor had mentioned she ideally liked this step by October 1st to settle our, our grant list, but I don't want to put you on the spot, but just since you're here, I mean, do you have a strong view on if we should try and wait two weeks, or if we should vote on it now with the idea it can be overturned with 20 signatures, or then it goes to a town meeting?
Yeah, we still leave the option for the 20 signature to bring it to a town meeting. Right now, as I alluded to earlier, is that I don't see an impact on any of our veterans either. I'm a member of the American Legion also, named the VFW, but I don't see an impact currently, but you still need to leave the option open.
Yes, so we would have the option for the 20 signatures, which would then send it to a town meeting. So if, not to put you completely on the spot, but if you're okay with that, and it sounds like the other two board members would like to vote on it tonight, and then like we had talked about, if anybody does want to talk more, has concerns or anything, I'm also happy to meet with them up in, you know, anytime.
Yep. And I, I'm under the impression that the state of Connecticut is gonna review and maybe revise their bill.
They had talked about, there, we actually just had another meeting last week with our regional, like, other, you know, Ledgerd, Waterford, everybody there, and they were saying, I think one of the requests to the state is that they are gonna look at it again. I don't know if they're willing to take it up, but they were talking about time, an income threshold, or asking the state if they'd be willing to help offset municipalities since they passed this, and obviously it's a much bigger fiscal impact on all the towns. New London and Norwich in particular have pretty hard hit on their grant list since they don't have much taxable property to begin with. So, I mean, the state might still look at changes, but again, this past year, the one thing they, they did change was allowing municipalities to do these steps.
Yeah, so I do have a acquaintance, he's in the New London VFW, and he's 100%. So I know that this, if he lives in Stonington, it would probably have an impact on him, but I don't represent New London, I represent Stonington.
And I think Jennifer had shared a great presentation, which I think is, you know, available if anybody wants to see it, but essentially, if I'm remembering correctly, I think we have, I don't remember off the top of my head, I don't want to give exact numbers, but the majority of our veterans that meet the threshold are all under that median cap. There were a few outliers, you know, people who have, you know, more expensive homes, that would be, you know, over that, but they, they still get the exemption, obviously, up till the median, they just wouldn't get what was over that. And then I think one thing we talked about that we did feel strongly about, even though this is a big fiscal impact, was adding in the TDIU, because I do know when the state changed their terminology, we had three veterans who would have received it, but then were told they can't receive the exemption anymore because they didn't meet that 100% criteria, but they can't work. So, and, you know, we had talked about feeling pretty strongly about being able to add that in, which I hope presidents will be supportive of at the town meeting. So again, I think just to say, we're trying to find the right balance, but it's definitely, it's definitely hard because you guys have done so much for us.
Can you remind me of the date of the town meeting?
October 6th.
That's what I thought, so we don't have two weeks.
Oh.
And we don't have another meeting before.
Oh, we don't, on our side, yeah.
We don't, no.
Ours is that Wednesday, but it would be just after the town meeting.
So I, I'm prepared to make a motion to implement the cap.
Okay. And Debbie, still feel?
Yes, I still feel that way, and I second it.
All right, any further discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right, the motion carries for that. And Eric, thank you so much. And again, you're welcome to stay for the rest of our meeting, but you also don't have to. We will be voting after, a little bit later, to send those other items to the town meeting, but, and thank you. One very exciting other news, a request for a permit fee waiver from the Stonington Borough Fire Department. Chief Holdley submitted a request to waive the permit fees related to the fire department's H-Back project, which includes two permits totaling $121 and then a $757 permit respectively. Could I get a motion to waive those building permit fees?
So moved.
I second.
Any discussion?
No, I think this is something we typically do and should do for a fire department.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. All right, so set the call for a special town meeting on October 6th to consider and vote upon, bear with me, because I have to legally read all of this. First, a resolution to abate the real property taxes on October 1st, 2024, grant list for property located at Pequod Trail Map Block Lot 9627, recently acquired by Avalonia Land Conservancy, which taxes total $1,849.90. Second, a resolution to revise and modify the town ordinance established.
Here, it's good for.
I'm only on.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, I just.
Second, a resolution to revise and modify the town ordinance establishing the town's commission on aging to update the duties of said commission. Third, a resolution to revise and modify an ordinance of the town of Stonington, Connecticut, providing for an update to the parking and traffic regulations to include revisions to general parking restrictions regarding parking near stop signs erected by the Traffic Authority in accordance with Connecticut Statute Section 14-301 and intersections or marked crosswalks. Fourth, a resolution for an ordinance of the town of Stonington, Connecticut, providing for a property tax exemption for surviving spouses of killed persons in action while performing active military duty with the armed forces. Fifth, a resolution for an ordinance of the town of Stonington, Connecticut, providing for a property tax exemption for veterans with a service-connected total disability based on individual unemployability, be it hereby resolved that pursuant to Section 3-3 of the Charter, the Board of Sclam calls a special town meeting for Monday, October 6th, 2025, at 7:00 p.m. at Stonington High School, 176 South Broad Street, Pocatuck, Connecticut, to consider and act upon resolutions as outlined in the notice of special town meeting, which will be attached to the minutes of this meeting as Appendix A. Do I hear a motion to approve the resolution to cause special town meeting on Monday, October 6th, 2025, at 7:00 p.m.?
So moved.
I second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
No, the confusion was my word, the wording that I have in my English, I'm a little different.
All right. Well, almost done. Request for street number assignment, the request is street number for Map 162 Block 4, Lot 4A, become 84, Miss Tuxa Avenue, Mystic, Connecticut, 06355. Do I hear a motion to approve the street number assignment?
So moved.
I second.
That's great, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, last thing, comments on the segment. Ben, do you want to start?
Uh, yeah, only thing I have, just WPCA last night, good news, I'm, so we're relining, aligning Route 27, looks like that'll be moving ahead soon, and hopefully we beat the next tourist season, because that's gonna be pretty, pretty disruptive for several months, it looks like. That's it for me.
Okay, Debbie?
Yeah, I'm gonna hold off since I'm on the phone, so I don't know how, how much you can hear me, until next month. And I assume you are gonna give an update on the park, and I did see that our LEP sent us a, an update for the public as well.
Yep, do, do you want to talk about that, though? You're working so hard on it.
Well, only to say that the work is coming along finally, and, you know, it's gonna be a lot more visible even in the future, although they have been working very hard on it, so I'm just excited to see it happen.
Okay, that's wonderful, um, thank you. I, again, I'll keep it brief, because I know we've got a lot going on, but I'd say, just to let you guys know, next week I'm going to the Board of Finance meeting, it probably will be my last one, but just to give an update on the bonding, as it kind of relates to us, so as soon as I get a final updates from everybody, I'll be sure to share the spreadsheet with you all, and then we can talk about it at our October 8th meeting. Just trying to get updates from everybody, that was approved for Phase 1, where the projects stand, any updates on funding, any issues there, so that will be a big part of that. And, yeah, just been very busy trying to work on transition meetings with all the staff to see what, you know, they think they need from me before I leave, and, you know, what they want incoming people to know and understand about their departments. We're trying to button up a lot of projects. Everybody's been working really hard and doing some really great work. Hopefully at the next meeting, I'll give you guys a pretty good update, since a lot of those projects are in the bond, but if you have questions in the meantime, just let me know. Stacy, my friend.
Sounds great.
Thanks.
All right, nothing else, we can stay on the journey, and Debbie, thanks for joining your call.
Oh, thank you. See you soon. All right, bye-bye.
Thank you.